Good evening and welcome to the Town of Rockland Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, November 19, 2019. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, played tonight by Jacob and Lucas of the Cub Scout PAC 12. Gentlemen, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, guys. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meeting and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. First on the agenda tonight is Open Session Minutes from November 2, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the open session minutes of November 2, 2019.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. I just point out that Mike Mullen might be joining us late, and Mr. Penny is absent tonight due to work responsibilities. Okay. Next on the agenda is...
We can't really open the meeting until 7:20, so why don't we...
Public hearing.
Go up to licenses or whatever. Maybe we get Debbie Cookshanks or someone to come over and give her a talk while we're waiting for the 20 minutes.
Why don't we hold off on that for right now? Let's go to...
License renewal?
Let's skip to 2020 license renewals. Mr. Ryan, could you read those?
Yeah, if I could find any of things. Remember the... That's the assessors thing. The town administrator informs me that we don't have to read these into the record, but since we always do, we're going to continue it. These are all licenses that are being held in the town that we're going to vote on. An all-alcohol club, the Columbia Social Club, 440 Webster Street, the Old Colony VFW, 22 Church Street. All-alcohol Carmen Wittler's license, China Plaza, 35 Market Street, Monero Steakhouse, 371 Union Street, 99 Restaurant, 29 Accord Drive Park, Accord Park Drive, I should say. Players Sports Bar and Grill, 86 VFW, Rockland Bar and Grill, 323 Union Street, Porter's Pub, 363 Union Street, and TK O'Shares, 934 Hingham Street. A wine and malt Carmen Wittler's license for Butterfield Restaurant, 372 Market Street. Famous Pizza, 488 Market Street. Wine and malt package, 711, 92 Market Street. Richdale Food Shop, 474 Market Street. Sam's Food and Smoke Shop, 200 VFW Drive. All-alcohol package, Luke's Liquor, 167 Market Street. All-alcohol inholder, Doubletree Hilton Rockland, 923 Hingham Street. Carmen Wittler's licenses, Baking with Joy, 347 Center Street. The Harmon Club, 168 Concord Street. Rockland Bar and Grill, 323 Union Street. Burger King, number 3708, 1333 Hingham Street. Burger King, number 4528, 157 Market Street. Mary Lou's Coffee, 200 Webster Street. Vivy's Kitchen, 200 VFW Drive. TK O'Shares, 934 Hingham Street. Butterfield Restaurant, 372 Market Street. Dunkin' Donuts, 852 Hingham Street. Dunkin' Donuts, 1149 Hingham Street. China Plaza, 35 Market Street. 99 Restaurant, 29 Accord Park Drive. Automatic Amusement, TK O'Shares, 934 Hingham Street. Entertainment licenses, The Harmon Club, 168 Concord. Rockland Bar and Grill, 323 Union Street. TK O'Shares, 934 Hingham Street. Rockland Golf Course, 276 Plain Street. China Plaza, 35 Market Street. The 99 Restaurant, 29 Accord Drive. Class 1 auto licenses, Realty System Arizona doing business as Hillcrest, 401 Beach Street. I guess that's not the wrong class, but anyway. Hometown Homes, Live Oaks, 680 Union Street. Hometown Homes, Leisure Woods, 31 Leisure Woods Drive. Class 2 licenses, Advanced Transmission and Clutch, 511 Plain Street. And Supreme Muffin and Break, 218 VFW Drive. I'll make a motion. We accept all as I read them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, so...
And I just want to add, this is approved pending all obligations that we met. Add that to it.
Yeah, that's it. So because we have a public hearing at 7:20, we are jumping around a little bit. We did the license renewals.
Dan Begins just got here. I don't know if you want to do...
I don't want to cut them off. I think there'll be more than a 15, 20-minute conversation. John Elliott, do you want to come on up? Come on, come on up.
I'm a long 15.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, John.
You have to at least be 12.
12? Okay.
So, John, one of the reasons that we've asked you to come up, it's something that we've been trying to do. Obviously, the town hall has been through a lot over the last couple of years, and we're trying to remind people in the general public of the good work that's being done up here and the good people that work up here, and kind of put a name to the face so that they can, you know, reacquaint themselves with the people that are working for them, you know, and their tax dollars are going towards, and have an idea of what's going on in those departments. So, no further ado, the exciting world of the Treasury Department.
Okay, and I guess along that vein, I just want, before I actually start, like any manager, the success of your office is really dependent upon having quality people working for you. And I'm certainly blessed to have two outstanding ladies working in my department, Christine Bradmore and Diane Mullino, who, and I definitely would like to thank them publicly for all their hard work and dedication. So, I'm just going to quickly go over. I have like seven or eight bullet points of the major things that the Treasury Office does. If you have any questions, you know, feel free to chime in and let me know. First, payroll is one of the major functions within the Treasurer's Office. We're responsible for making sure that everyone gets paid the proper amount. We'll work with the Accountant's Office very closely with that. We make sure that all the withholdings are right, all the federal and state filings are done. We do that via our payroll provider, Harper's. And now that it's getting close to year-end, we'll be getting ready to do the W-2s, the 1099s, and the 1095s, which is part of the Affordable Care Act. The second is accounts payable. Every check goes out of my office, so we'll get all the checks ready, put them with the appropriate vouchers, get them in the mail out to all the different vendors. Then accounts receivable. All monies that come into the town either go through the Collector's Office, who was in a couple of weeks ago, or my office. The Collector takes in water, soil, trash, and tax payments. The Treasurer's Office takes in everything else. We get this money ready to go to the bank and then enter in all the appropriate information into our accounting system, UNIS. Next major thing we do is cash management. We've got to obviously make sure we have enough money to pay the bills, and we'll invest any excess monies. And the three things we look for in investing are safety, liquidity, and yield in that order. So, it's more important to have it liquid and safe than to be doing anything crazy with it, trying to get a few extra, earn a couple of extra dollars, because this isn't my money, it's the town's money, and I take that responsibility very seriously. The way I conduct the cash management is I try to have relationships with as many banks as possible. I currently have nine and will be adding a 10th one this week, and I've got to the point where they will actually contact me when they have a better rate, because I know that I shop around, and I will not be shy about taking my money from Bank A and moving it to Bank B if they're giving me a better rate. So, that's certainly something that has been a major emphasis since I took over here. So, and then reconciliation is the next major area. I have to know where all the money is at all times, constantly checking, making sure that there's nothing funny going on with any of the balances, and we'll then make sure that what I say we have, the Accounting Office then agrees with that. And I know that, you know, we're certainly getting, now that we're fully up to speed in all the different offices, we're to the point where we're already reconciled through September of this year, which is probably the closest we've been to real time as we've been in quite a while. So, again, working with the Accounting Office, we have a new accountant, and it's been great to be, have a full team here again. I can definitely tell you that. Then investments, anything outside of the general fund, it's my responsibility to make sure it's invested. We have probably just over $5 million in trust accounts, including scholarships, which we have a little over $1 million there, and this past year we paid out $35,000 approximately to Rockland students, and that's something that is one of the things I enjoy doing, is cutting those types of checks to deserving students. Then tax title is basically when a lien gets placed on by the Collector for past due taxes. It becomes my responsibility at that point. That charges an interest rate of 16%. It is certainly encouraging, encourages you to pay it off. And you can't sell the property until it is sold. We can foreclose. We do do that. I tried to avoid foreclosure, if at all possible, but we do have several cases in the land court and a couple that settled fairly recently, 320 Concord Street and a parcel up on North Union Street. And like I said, we'd rather have a, enter into a payment plan, and I have probably 20 different individuals in payment plans currently, so we'd rather have the money than try to take the property. And finally, borrowing, so it's my responsibility to go out and issue debt when appropriate. So, if the school project does pass, that'll be the next opportunity for us to do a, to do a borrowing. So, I'll work very closely with our financial advisors and bond counsel to make sure everything is on the up and up and get us the lowest rate possible on any kind of borrowing that we do do. So, in a real quick couple of minutes, that's what we do in the Treasurer's Office, so...
Any questions?
No, thank you, John.
Karen, Larry?
No, it's, it sounds like very exciting work, John.
It is. I'm an excited guy, so it fits perfectly.
You have to be a numbers guy to enjoy it. I'd rather come for it. Anyway, thank you very much.
Yep, sure.
Doing a good job.
John, I just, just one thing. I just want, I just want to commend you, being that you guys are reconciled in September, that's great. I know that it's a difficult year not having an accountant in the office or a part-time accountant for part of the year, and I know you guys...
It was last year, yes.
You guys were up against it all the time, and you guys did a really good job powering through that, and seeing that you guys are reconciled up to September, that's great. It's great to hear.
Yep, it's not just me, it's also the accounting.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. So, I appreciate that. And tax title, you mentioned the number of foreclosures. How many properties in town are currently in tax title? Did you say 16%?
16% is the interest that we charge on the past due amount.
How many properties are currently...
There's probably parcels in the neighborhood of 130 or so. I couldn't get you an exact number, but it's in that ballpark. But sometimes those are very small parcels, like the Park Street property has like 20 parcels in it, so sometimes it's a little misleading going by parcels, but that's approximately how many are in.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. Next on the agenda, community development, waiver requests and subordination requests.
Sure. And while I'm getting to that page, if I can just add, I want to also thank John for just being a good participant. You know, we're doing monthly financial team staff meetings, so things are a little bit different than they've been done in the past, but we're, you know, trying to build a team, and he's been very good about attending those meetings and participating, and it's, so I just want to acknowledge that as well and thank him for that, for that effort. So, you have in your packet, there's two different requests from the Community Development Office for, the first one is for a lien forgiveness request. There's a lot of backup, which I didn't provide, because I thought the cover memo would be sufficient. If you'd like, I can also share a letter from the person requesting it. You'll see in the memo that this client has requested forgiveness. There's a lien amount of $28,000, which is set to expire in 2027. And they talked about in the memo that there is a provision on a case-by-case basis if a hardship is demonstrated, that the homeowner can apply for a waiver, and that the recommendation in this instance is for 50%. I think in this case, the family had intended on fully paying it back over time. However, the husband passed away, his health took a turn for the worse, an older person passed away almost five years ago. The widow has been doing her best and is unable to, unable to make it work. I could provide more of that detail, but you know, this is not a case of someone trying to game the system or profit from it, and they are, as you can see, I think they're about halfway through already, eight years out of the 15-year loan. But given the fact that with the sale, there will be some cash that will be, that will be realized, the recommendation is for 50%. And again, you know, given the circumstances of the family, older people, the widow, et cetera, you know, I do concur and recommend, recommend this request.
Okay. I'd just ask any motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve this forgiveness for 50% of the obligation.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. And then the second one's a little bit different. This one, my understanding is the federal government has a cap, a maximum amount of $40,000 for these types of rehabilitation projects that deal with lead remediation. So, CDBG went out and they got their three quotes, and it just exceeds it by a bit. So, I believe what they're asking for is $51,000. So, in this instance, all they're looking for is, we're the ones that oversee, or you're the ones that oversee the program on behalf of the federal government, is to exceed that federal $40,000 cap and allow them to go up to $51,000, which is $3,100 above the low bid, which is essentially just a $3,100 contingency amount. So, my understanding is, you know, this cap is there just to make sure that there aren't crazy numbers, you know, $1 million for something that shouldn't cost that much. And again, they got hard quotes from reliable contractors, and it's just $51,000. So, we recommend approving that waiver.
Do you approve the waiver?
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that puts us right at the 7:20 public hearing. Assessors' Annual Classification Hearing. Deb?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Myself.
Good evening.
Deb, are you?
So, you have the packets that I gave to Doug to put you, to send to. So, anyone in the room that doesn't know me or at home, I'm Deborah Kupchak. I'm the assessor for the Town of Rockland. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Board of Assessors for the annual tax classification hearing. The Board of Assessors was notified on October 31st that the fiscal year 20 assessment classification, LA 4, was approved. So, once property has been classified, there must be a public hearing at which the assessors present information to the Board of Selectmen, who vote whether or not to establish different tax rates on all classes of property or the same, or the same rate by selecting a factor of one. See, I have the packets, so we can just go through it real quickly. So, on page, on page one of the packet, you see the classification of property with the full value of the town at $2,118,247,120. And you see that the town is 80.4% residential and commercial industrial property is just shy of 20% at 19.6. And on the next page, we have a nice little graph showing, pie chart showing how much residential we have. So, how do we, how do we arrive at the values for fiscal year 2020? So, 2020 is interim valuation year for the Town of Rockland. Last year was our revalue year. So, the purpose of the 2020 value adjustments estimate fair market value as of the assessment date as of January 1, 2019. So, all cities and towns in Massachusetts use a process called mass appraisal, and they use their computer-assisted mass appraisal system, and Rockland uses the PK system, as does Waymoth and Hanson, and there's three big companies, PK, Patriot, and Vision. So, unlike the individual fee appraisers that some people may have to, you know, to do an appraisal, we value just a single property. We, our goal is to, a mass appraisal is to bring all property to the full and fair market value, whether the property is sold or not. So, we have to achieve equity among all values and among the classes. So, the assessors analyze the qualified sales for the last full year we have on record, which is calendar year 2018. We perform statistical analysis, including ratio studies, and we adjust the values accordingly. Property values also may change because you have a permit on your house, you have an addition, you do some work on it, so they can, that can change in that respect, too. So, and if we, if we do sales inspections, or we do cyclical inspections. So, from fiscal year 2019 to 2020, there was, the whole town increased 5% in value. Coincidentally, the town, the average single-family assessment went up approximately 5%, as did the average commercial assessment. So, on page three, we have, we have the levy limit calculation, and the property tax levy is the major source of revenue to be raised each year by cities and towns. The maximum allowable levy for this year is $39,838,44. So, and that takes last year's levy plus 2.5% by a proposition 2.5, plus growth of $277,238, and what our debt exclusions are, so we're, so we're up to that $39 million mark. I do not have, for you tonight, I do not have the levy for, the actual levy, because we're going to town meeting in a couple of weeks, so we, we have a couple of housekeeping articles, and excess levy capacity, I assume, will be minimal, but at the end of this meeting, we'll have to carry forward, and I'll have to come back the night after town meeting and just have the LA 5 for your approval, because I have to be able to tell you what the excess levy capacity is. So, as I said before, the new growth has been certified at $277,238. Kind of a light year this year. Had two new, six new houses, two new commercial buildings, a couple of new condos. Went out there and, you know, went out in all my permits and, you know, you know, you get out there and you do all your permit work, but it is what it is as far as, you know, when you have, you know, you have to go, you have to, you can't make this stuff up, you know, you have to, you have to, you have to get what is there, and hopefully, you know, in the next couple of years, we'll see some more, you know, more new growth, maybe commercial-wise, with a few new things coming onboard, or maybe some new residential, but I don't see it being very, it's kind of lean right this year also. So, if we go to, if we go to the next page, it's the estimated uniform, our single rate So, we're anticipating a, if we, if we levy to the max, we're anticipating a tax rate of 17.53, which is down 39 cents from last year, so, because, because the assessments went up, the tax rate, the tax rate goes down. So, and if you go on page five, the average single-family assessment has increased from 2019, it was approximately $318,000, and now it's up to $333,000. So, the average taxpayer is going to pay about $151 extra, it's about, you know, 2.6%. So, it's keeping in line with, you know, up and down of the tax rate assessment in So, we go to page six and seven. This is, this is what we're really here for, to, to look at the impact of a shift in the tax rate. So, we give you some scenarios. On the first page, a shift of 1 to 4% and on the next page, 5, 10, 15, 20. If you look at 20%, for instance, you have to charge the, the commercial tax, the commercial class, an additional 20% to save the residential class 5%, and you would never start that high in a, that high of a shift, but I'm just making a point that you would have to, you know, you have to shift pretty, pretty far to, to save your residential class some Does anyone have any questions with the shift or of any of the information that I have here?
No, we had, as a board, we had, we had talked, I think in depth last year, about, about the potential to split the tax rate. Looking at the numbers as presented, I think it would be detrimental to the businesses that we have, and it would be minimal, minimal benefit to the, to the residents at this time anyway.
At this time, yeah.
Yeah.
Until we, until we see some growth, maybe.
Some more commercial. You know, I think it's encouraging to see that we're at an 80% and, you know, almost at that 20%. It looks like we increased a little bit. I think last year, we were a little bit lower than that.
Yeah.
What, what is the goal? I mean, what do you see for most towns that do have a split rate as far as a mix of commercial versus residential?
I think you'd, I think you'd, I think you'd want to be at least...
70, 25?
Yeah, 70, you know, yeah, you'd at least want to be there, because, you know, you can't go back once you...
Yeah. Right. And that, I think, was new information to us, I think, last year as well, so...
Yeah. Well, you can, well, you can go back, but it will, but it will cost, it will, it will be a huge burden to the residential if you do go back, so it's, yeah.
We just don't have enough business to balance doing that at this time. Hopefully, when the airbase gets built out, if it does get built out and Rockland has its, its way over there that, you know, in the space that we fill with businesses and stuff, then someday we can do that. But if we do that now, it would drive out business, and the little guys get hurt, not the big guys, because they all, they get plenty of money, but the little guys get hurt, so. I'm going to make a motion that, I'm going to take three votes, and I'm going to make a motion that the town does not adopt a residential exemption for fiscal year 2020.
Do you want to close the public hearing first?
Oh, yeah, we got to do that first, I'm sorry.
So, I'll first take a motion to...
Motion to close the meeting.
To close the public hearing.
We're not going to, we're not going to close it. We're going to carry over to the next meet, to the next meeting.
To the next portion.
Then we have to, when we can't vote on that. Can we? We have to...
Do you want to wait to vote until the, until the next meeting, then?
Um, that's fine if you want to wait.
Yeah.
That's fine. We can.
They'll, they'll make it a more complete deal, or the correct deal, I guess you'd have to say.
Yeah.
Want to make sure we, these guys here, Boy Scouts are here, Cub Scouts are here to learn a few things about the government, and one of the things you don't want to make is a mistake, a foolish mistake. We all make some mistakes, and we pay the price for it in humility, but we want to make sure that the big mistakes are kept to a minimum. Thank you very much.
So, we'll carry over, and I've got a couple of updates if you want to hear, a little update from my office.
Sure.
While I'm here.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we're just, we're just going to cover a few, a few points. So, the cities and towns are mandated by the Department of Revenue to complete townwide cyclical reinspection programs every 10 years. So, in 2018, we finished the first one since I've been here of, of the program, and this winter, we'll start our next 10-year cycle. Well, it's due in 10 years, but we're going to do it over eight years, because we have, we have a, we have five years, counting this year, five years to the, to the next revalue, and then another five to the following. So, we have 10 years to get, to try to get every property in Rockland re-inspected. So, we'll, we'll start, we'll start the properties, the far northeast corner that we started with last time, over in Gardner and Pine Haven, and like I said, we'll do it over eight years, and we'll make an attempt, and the reason we do, the reason we do that is so that everyone is fairly and equitably assessed in town, regardless whether they pull permits or not, and we get a chance to go by and measure the house and knock on the door and try to get an inspection. We do our best, but, you know, it's, it's up to the homeowner to let us in or not, so. And in addition to doing all of our job each year, updating the real estate values and, you know, with the mass appraisal process and collecting the data and new growth, and committing, and also committing all this to the Collector, the Assessors' Office is sent electronic... commit, and also committing all this to the collector, the assessor's office is sent electronic excise tax files from the Mass RMV to download and commit. And I wanted to, to tell you that the Registry of Motor Vehicles on November 12th went live, completely transitioning from their 30-year-old ALARS mainframe application to a new web-based application called Atlas. So this is huge tech, a huge upgrade in technology. The assessor's office has been busy working in conjunction with the Registry of Motor Vehicles, the tax collector, the IT director, in our accounting software, Vender Munis, to make sure we're able to process the tax commitment bills now, I mean, the motor vehicle excise bills. So we completed, we completed the test file, and downloaded and committed it, so we did well, and we just got our first live file that we were able to, to do, so we were very happy that that all worked out. So the fiscal '20 actual tax bill is going to be mailed prior to December 31st, once we complete this tax rate recap process and the tax rate set. Exemption guidelines for qualified seniors, surviving spouses, disabled veterans, and the blind are available on the assessor's page of the town website, and we will be accepting applications until April 1st, 2020, for this current year. Please call the tax assessor's office if you have any questions. And we're excited to announce we have a new employee in our office, Leslie Donovan, who worked part-time in the library, library, started last week, and we're busy in training mode, teaching her how to input deeds, create a botter's list, and process motor vehicle abatements. So we're sorry to lose Kathy Enzalone, who was in our office, but we wish her well, in a new job in the Board of Health office. And like John, he, I heard John thank his gals in his office. I want to thank my staff, especially my right-hand person, Christine McPherson, for all her assistance, especially while we were short-staffed this fall. And I'd like to thank the Board of Assessors for their continued support, and all the other department heads at Town Hall for their cooperation.
Any questions for Deb?
That's a wrap.
No, that was great, thank you.
Thanks, Deb, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to close the meeting.
Weren't you recently elected to a position on a group, maybe, I know she'll never brag about herself, so I'm going to force her to do it, if you could just let the board know what you were recently appointed or elected to?
Next month, I'm going to be installed as president of the Massachusetts, I think Massachusetts, not the Massachusetts, the Plymouth County Assessor's Association, so.
Okay.
And we're going to be having our annual meeting right here in Rockland, and showcase our little town here.
Excellent.
And we're going to have, hopefully, Jim Paul give us a little historic homes presentation, so we're, we're excited to showcase Rockland.
Very good, excellent.
Thank you.
All right.
I know, we, we want to just officially put it into, like, reserve, or do we just leave it off?
I think you leave the public hearing open.
Do we just leave the question to the public hearing open?
Yeah, you can, you continue it until your next meeting.
Continue it to the next one.
Continue it to the next meeting.
Until she has the final levy numbers.
Exactly.
That's fine, we have to vote on that now, just do it.
No, you're fine.
Nope, we're good.
Just want to make sure, I don't want to, you know, we run into people who question everything we do, so.
You've noticed.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a 7:30 public hearing for alcohol license change approval for the 99 Restaurants, 29 Acord Park Drive, change of officer, and change of beneficial interest. So entertain a motion to open that public hearing.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second, thank you, Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, Mr. Webb, can you take this?
Sure, so the, the state required towns to have a public hearing for this change of ownership, change of officer, beneficial interest. And I should add that they, the company, 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, did plan on having their attorney attend tonight at the last minute. That person was sick, was unable to attend, we'd already posted the public hearing. Personally, I don't think there's any issues, I didn't even think the attorney needed to be here. It's really just a very kind of high-level corporate, you know, change. The ABCCs reviewed everything, there's really no issues, so they're just requesting that you vote to approve the change of officer and the change of beneficial interest. And again, the state's already reviewed it, I don't think there's any issues, and it's just at the kind of high-level corporate that it's changing, it's not really affecting the actual restaurant here in Rockland.
And all the proper paperwork has been completed?
Yes.
Yep, and all cases be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve?
First we get it closed.
First we get it.
No.
Yeah.
Go ahead, um, go ahead.
You guys are killing me.
You go.
You make the motion to close.
Close the hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Yep, aye.
Okay.
How you go?
Public, hold on.
Now, I'll make a motion.
Hold on, one second. Public hearing is now closed, and now I'll entertain a motion for a change in license approval.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Also, entertain a motion for change of officer.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor. And I'll entertain a motion for change of beneficial interest.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor. Okay, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was painless, yeah.
Yeah, relatively.
All right, next on the agenda, I'm sure what everybody's been waiting for, the elementary school building project PAC is going to present to us. Mr. Bidens, Mrs. Bidens, you guys want to come on up? Are you going to hang out there, Daniel?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you for being here.
So Dan, I, I wanted to, to give you guys an opportunity, you guys have been working hard, not so, so much behind the scenes, you guys have been really out there, and been, been really, really out there for, for everybody in the community, so we've got obviously a big election town meeting on December 2nd, and even bigger election on December 7th. So I wanted to give the PAC an opportunity to present to the residents of the town the benefits of the school building project. So without further ado, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, may I just say how great it is to be in the impressive, be in the presence of such an impressive, inspiring, and honorable group tonight? And of course, I'm talking about the young men to my right, the gentlemen from the Boy Scouts, thank you guys so much for being here and being so patient to sit through all this procedure, and to get to a point right now where we're thinking about talking about something that might be important to you guys, which is an elementary school building project. And also, thank you to the Board of Selectmen and our leadership politically in town. Rockland, the citizens of Rockland, the political leadership of Rockland, time and time again, have been supportive of education for our students and our student athletes here in Rockland, and each of you individually here tonight, in your own cases, have been very supportive of education in Rockland, so thank you for that. And that is why we are here. Who are we? We are the Our Kids, Our Town, Our Future Political Action Committee. It is our goal to raise awareness and raise initiative towards a positive and yes vote towards building a new elementary school here in Rockland. Furthermore, who are we? We are you. We're moms, we're dads, we're coaches, we're teachers, we're students, we're selectmen, we're policemen, we're firemen, we're everybody in town that recognizes the need in our facilities, that two of our three buildings are, have, have reached the end of their useful life, and it has time for us to become, to discuss interest on, on what would be options for the future of those buildings, and interests for the future of the students of Rockland. A little bit about me, I previously served, not anymore, but previously on our town school committee. Almost four years ago now, we submitted a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to present the idea of maybe whether or not Rockland might need a new school building, particularly at the elementary school level. They agreed with us that we do, we're one of a handful of districts in the state that they agreed were in need of new facilities. For any of us who have been through these schools in the last generation, two or three even, have, I mean, these were old buildings when some of our parents and grandparents went to school. They've reached the end of their useful life, our students are based with overcrowding, are based with old facilities, and we're reaching an opportunity right now, the state is willing to partner with us in the town of Rockland to build a new educational school facility. Two of the buildings, two of our three educational buildings at the elementary level, are reached the end of their life. At this point now, we are in a position where we will need to build new schools for our children, without a doubt, the need is here within this generation. We have the opportunity right now, the state is willing to partner with us at an over 60% rate reimbursement on reimbursable costs. The big number, I think, that we're trying to make our residents and our neighbors and folks in town aware of, is that in order to bring two of our three schools up to code, now that is not to be modern, places of learning, but just up to code, two of these three buildings would cost us $45 million to bring those buildings up to code. To build one new school that would, state-of-the-art school, that would house all of our under elementary school children, and Rockland would cost this town $50 million, simply $5 million more than bringing the two of the three buildings up to code. In our view, that is simply a financial no-brainer. Our kids are probably not going to benefit from this, our youngest may benefit from it at the end, it's not about that. You know, we have a family in town, I have a business in town, we have kids that go to school in this town. I am not one that would ask people to separate from their tax penny lightly. I understand that we're a working-class community, I understand that those of us in Rockland work hard for our money, and we work hard on making sure that we spend it diligently and smartly. I, I think this is the best penny for our taxpayers' dollar, the best way to spend our taxpayers' dollar now and in the future. I think it is the right answer, I believe in it passionately. The group that we're working with in our PAC believes in it passionately, we've got a great group of people in our town, some of them are here with us tonight, who are here behind us to raise awareness, and it's really our goal just to get people out to vote, both on December 2nd at our town meeting, and on December 7th on the ballot, to vote for our, what is our opinion, the dire need to replace all three of our school buildings. If we were to replace just one of these buildings, or even two of them, it would put us in a pace, a place of, in our opinion, severe educational inequality, as far as the neighborhoods in, in town go. Just because you live in a particular neighborhood in this town doesn't mean that you should deserve to go to the best school in this town. We really believe that every kid in town, every kid in Rockland deserves to go to the best school in Rockland, and we think that this is the, really the best opportunity to do that. So what we're trying to do really is to raise awareness, and to get people involved, and help people get out to vote on December 2nd and December 7th. So we do have a Facebook page, it's called the Our Kids, Our Town, Our Future page, and that is the best way to reach out to us, to get more information, to find out how you might be able to get involved, and there's lots of ways to get involved, lots and lots. We understand that our peers, and many of you in the room, and people in town are very busy nowadays, whether it be sports or jobs, and, and it's really hard to give back, but even in really small ways, people can get involved in this initiative, and it's an important one, so we really hope that our team members and our neighbors will help us get on board. Anything to add?
I think you said it all.
All right.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Ryan?
I have so many questions, and, and, what's going to, what will happen, what's, we're going to replace the one down here at Memorial Park School, so what would happen to the other two schools?
So, great question, Mr. Ryan. So actually, what we're looking to do is replace all three schools, really, all three schools would be replaced in the sense of elementary education. This new building project would replace all three of them, and all three of our schools, Esten Memorial Park and Jefferson School, would attend this new elementary school that would be built down essentially on the Lower Oval, essentially creating a town campus all the way from the senior center to this new building project at the elementary school, to our renovated middle and high school, right up to the center of town, which really, in my opinion, is really what is the best part about this project. This isn't really just for elementary schools in Rockland, elementary children in Rockland, this is really a benefit to the entire community. I've spoken about it a lot, I can imagine residents of Plain Street, or folks who might be attending a function at the senior center, to have the opportunity to walk from Plain Street all the way uptown to Union Street, on a well-lit college-campus-like path, to be able to come all the way to access Union Street and Plain Street and back. It would really be, for folks across the board, children that have already been through elementary school, the new field that would be a part of this project, children in our sports teams, some of the guys that are right here, I know, Lucas, I know you play in a couple's teams I coach, and those fields down there are a little long in the tooth, aren't they? All those holes and dust and rocks that are down there, all those youth sports programs that are really reaching out and trying to be able to have added space, there'd be a brand-new, beautiful turf field that would be right down there. The goal of this thing is to have it be a really community-wide project, so that everybody in our town would benefit from it.
Would the, would the existing schools be torn down?
So, yeah, so two of the three schools would be turned down, yes.
Two of three, two out of three, or all three?
Two out of the three would be. The Esten School would remain standing. The goal for the Esten School down the road is, is that we would have the opportunity, and it's an amazing opportunity, to be able to host what we already have, which is a full-day, free kindergarten in Rockland, which is pretty unique, not only on the South Shore, but in Massachusetts, that here in Rockland, we're able to offer our community members free full-day kindergarten, that's an amazing asset. What we're hoping to do down the road is to have the Esten School become an early childhood center, in which that, that would house what is currently our free full-day kindergarten, but we'd be hoping down the road to offer a free full-day preschool as well, to be able to have the four-year-olds in our community, to be able to be in front of licensed teachers, which is very unique, I don't know of another district on the South Shore that would be able to have this. And not only would the, that be great, Mr. Ryan, for the four-year-olds of our community, but that would be great for our community economically. That would allow young families in our community who previously might not have been able to afford childcare, to go out and get a second job for the second income earner in the house, to be able to have their child be in front of a licensed teacher for free all day long. That would allow business owners like me to be able to hire great young parents in town, and for those great young parents in town to have the opportunity to maybe go out and get unemployment opportunity. So I think that it's really, I mean, this is really an opportunity for our taxpayers and for our town, not just for the children of the town.
And I have a question, how will this impact traffic down in, the downtown and Union Street area?
Ms. Nyman, thank you for bringing that up, that's a great question. So right now, if you are a parent of middle-school students, or you're dropping off at MP, you're aware of, it's not that easy or convenient right now to pick up or drop off down there, and I know there's a lot of folks out there really concerned about this project, because conventional wisdom would say that if you're going to add a whole other building right there, with all the chaos that's there right now, what's going to happen? It's going to be just an awful situation. Well, the good news about the situation is that part of the building project, is that's something that we've looked at really, really intensively, on the traffic flow patterns, and about how we can actually improve upon that. So this would not be a hindrance to the traffic flow problem as to what would exist there right now, but in fact, we envisioned it would be an improvement to it.
Dan, you spoke in the beginning about renovations to the existing schools being about $45 million, as opposed to the $50 million being spent by, for the, for the singular school. What is, I mean, if you know it, what is the, the bonding, the timeline to pay off that bond for the, what's the difference between the $50 million borrowing and the $45 million?
So as far as the $45 million, as far as repairing the schools and bringing them up to code, that is not something that we would be able to partner with the Massachusetts School Building Authority on. That was something that the, that the town of Rockland would be on the hook for, completely by itself, to bring the schools up to code on that $45 million. So for the $50 million, that would be an investment from the town of Rockland, but the entire building project is about an $86 million project. So from what we would be bonding from the $50 million from the town, $86 million would be the total cost of the project. To, to your question on the $45 million, if we were to rehab these buildings, to bring them just up to code, that is not something that would be reimbursable through the state.
What would the timeline be to pay that off to the taxpayers?
So the timeline on that, Mr. Ello, can I refer you on that? Do you have?
I'm not sure on the renovation, but to borrow, we can go up 30 years, so.
So 30 years is the 50 million right now, is what we're talking about?
I'm not sure, it might be shorter on a renovation, but I'd have to look that up.
I thought I heard 10 years, I thought I heard somewhere 10 years on that.
So I think on this, on the Building Committee website, which is now different from the PAC, by the way, but the School Building Committee website, there's a lot of information up on that, and when, and Daniel brings it up, it's a great point, and I think that information is available on there, Mr. Chairman. And also, another thing to point up on that is on the School Building Committee website, is a great tool for taxpayers, for them to be able to figure out what the impact would be to them on their home, on their assessed value, on their tax impact. So the assessed value of your home is different, and this is an important point, the assessed value on your home is different than what you might look up the value on your house on something like Zillow or one of these real estate websites. The assessed value is typically lower, which would bring the tax impact on a family to be lower based upon that number. So that's an important piece. So I think for these questions, I think logistical questions, it's really important to know to visit the School Building Committee's webpage and Facebook page, and for us as a PAC, it's our job to try to tell everybody all about, what are the great reasons about why you should vote for this.
So why is it crucial that we vote on it now and not wait a few years?
So thank you, Ms. Nyman, that's another great question. It's crucial that we vote on this now, because we may not have the partnership of the MSBA in a few years. This partnership with the MSBA goes back almost four years now, when we submitted a statement of interest under our previous superintendent, Mr. John Retchless. statement of interest under our previous superintendent, Mr. John Retchless. Over that time, it's really a tedious process by the MSBA to be able to weed out and to be able to choose which schools they might partner with. We were blessed to be one of the schools they would partner with in this particular cycle, and we're, we may not be blessed to be part of that, you know, down the road. There's been really a lot of work, a lot of research put into this, not only for the town of Rockland, but from the state of Massachusetts. You know, we talk a little bit about government, and how government is often not the most well-run or the most streamlined, but I can tell you that I've been extraordinarily impressed with the MSBA and the way that they do work and the way that they do business. It's been very efficient, it's been very fair, and I think that they agree with us that Rockland's in an extraordinary place of need right now when it comes to our elementary schools, which is why that they've been willing to partner with us. Listen, there's lots of districts in this Commonwealth that need new municipal buildings, particularly school buildings, and the fact that right now, we're one of 20 districts that the MSBA is looking to work with speaks to quite a bit about the need right here in Rockland.
Any further questions?
Hello? We'll wait to the information later.
Okay. Dan, Danielle, appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
I know you guys have been very busy. I see you guys, I think anytime I go to the school for any kind of an event at night, you guys are all set up there, and you guys have been involved in everything in the community as is. You got two weeks to go.
We do, we do indeed. We do indeed, and, you know, again, you know, we're all one community, and I understand there's concerns about this. You know, anytime we talk about people's money, again, it's hard-earned money, and we can appreciate that, and if someone's not for this, I can appreciate that too, you know, I totally get it. But I think if anybody takes the time to look into this and really research it and understand the long-term impact of this to the taxpayer, I really think this is the best investment for a taxpayer, even for one that does not separate from their tax dollar easily. I really do, I think this is a good investment. I think if we think of our own homes, right now, we've got a heating system in our own home right now that's a bit long in the tooth, and we're looking at, we don't need it to replace it right now, but we need to replace it before it becomes an emergency need. I look at the town, just like my household, and that right now, we're in a position right now where we've gotten a pretty good deal from the state on this, and it may not exist next year or the year after that, and I think it would behoove us not to take advantage of it. So, before, you know, we finish up tonight, I just want to thank everyone that's working with us on our political action committee. We've really got a great group of moms, dads, grandmoms and dads, college students, recently graduates. We've got a really broad base of support for our PAC right now and people that are working really hard. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned about the different events that we're at. It's not just my wife and I, we're pretty busy with our young kids and I, but there's folks in our audience right now, and folks that are neighbors and teammates and coaches that are really stepping up to this. Our town really believes that this is something that we need right now, and it's been extraordinary to see how much everyone agrees. So, thank you to everybody, and thank you for everyone for your support, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Very much, good job.
All right, next on the agenda, other new business not reasonably anticipated, Mr. Olaf.
I do have something, thank you, Mike, and it's actually related to the school-building project that Mr. Biggins was just talking about. We just received a letter from the MSBA where they would, they're requiring a formal vote of the Board of Selectmen to authorize you, the chairman, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the motion, then I'll explain it in plain language. The motion would be to authorize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to execute and deliver the project's scope and budget agreement and any amendments thereto on behalf of the town, and to bind the town to its terms and conditions. So all that means is they're just asking for a formal vote to authorize the chair to sign a whole bunch of documents that have already been approved by everybody, by the MSBA, by town council, the project committee, et cetera. They just want a formal vote. So, I could read it again, or if you just want to make a motion to, as stated.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Great, that's, no, that's good, thank you very much.
I'll talk again.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, town administrators reporting correspondence.
Thank you, I do have a few things to highlight tonight. I did attend a South Shore managers', actually, I should just start by thanking the Cub Scouts in the front row, these guys have been really patient, I know this is dry stuff, but you guys have been good, so hang in there, we're almost done, I promise.
You've taken it all in.
Yeah, no, that's good. So I attended a South Shore managers' meeting, I think I mentioned every quarter, I get together with all the other town managers and town administrators in the region, we were in West Bridgewater, and it was interesting, they had, as the guest speaker, the head of the Plymouth County Retirement Board, and what was interesting is, down the road, I don't know exactly how many years, he couldn't guarantee it, but there is a good opportunity for all towns to realize a significant savings or reduced expense associated with our county retirement contributions. So, there'll be more to come on that in the future. But it was interesting, and that's just something I like to let you know about, because I think it's important to keep in touch with the other regional managers and administrators. Just want to highlight, the Tax Collector's Office has been really busy recently, a lot of people coming in to pay their tax bills, you know, it's a tough, tough job being behind the window, nobody, nobody likes paying taxes, but they provide excellent customer service. And I also just wanted to highlight that they're gonna be physically reorganizing their office a little bit. The Collector Judy Hardigans made some effort to look at what documents they can purge and get rid of, they've contacted the state, so they're gonna be getting rid of some unnecessary files and documents they no longer have to store, and also use this time as an opportunity to get rid of some old outdated furniture, make it a little bit more kind of business-friendly, customer-friendly, so you might see some new furniture in their office, and that's all for the better. We've been working with the town accountant and the IT director to develop a new capital request form for all department heads. We presented a draft of it at the last all-department-head meeting, and we just finalized it and distributed it to all the department heads, and we're asking them to return it back to us by December 20th. Trying to keep it simple, just one page, but just ask important questions, what it's for, what it's replacing, highlighting some things you guys have talked about in your goals and objectives, along with a finance committee looking at, are there other sources of funding available, grants, things like that, and if any of these items are known to have multiple-year costs, like a lease purchase or something like that, to provide additional backup information. So, we just put that out, and we'll be getting that back in about a month. Similarly, the town accountant and I have started looking at our revenue estimates for the FY '21 budget, and we're gonna be meeting with the chairman very soon to be going over the budget outlook. I'm just gonna give you a little preview, it does look very tight, you know, we are a little bit concerned. So, we're gonna go over that in detail, and it's, everything's gonna be transparent, I'll be meeting with our finance team, and we'll be talking about it, and the finance committee will be talking about it, but it looks to us like, you know, there's been some aggressive revenue estimates in the past, and I don't think we can continue that trend of being overly aggressive with those estimates. So, it could be a tight year coming up, but we will, we'll look at that. We're just starting the process, and we'll be getting into that in more depth. Finishing up some of the capital projects here in Town Hall, all the plumbing's been repaired in all four of the bathrooms, there was a lot of old plumbing that needed repair, that's been done. You'll see the exterior railings being painted sometime next week, weather permitting, and also the interior stairwell, stairs and treads, and the trim is all gonna be painted soon. I also have an electrician that's gonna be coming to do, to fix all the exterior lights on the building, that's taking a little longer than I've wanted, but part of the issue deals with discontinued light fixtures, and we're working through that. But it's a safety issue, and we are working on that. This next sentence is something I never thought I was really gonna say in a job like this, but marijuana has been occupying a lot of my time lately. So it's really, it's just really interesting, you know, with the change in the laws and the availability of marijuana dispensaries, there's just been a lot of interest in the town of Rockland. So, as you know, we have at least five or six into separate host-community agreements already in place. There's a couple of facilities that are in process of being constructed, as well as being fully permitted. I've been on two different site visits, one today was a very large facility that's looking to do everything from medical marijuana dispensing to recreational dispensing and including cultivation, where they're actually growing it. Very large building, a complicated organization. So I'm just letting you know that, just because it's occupying a lot of our time. We attended a zoning Board of Appeals public hearing last week, the ZBA was very diligent, it was a long hearing, it went on for a couple of hours, and they were, you know, asking very good questions, wanting to make sure there weren't negative impacts on the butters and in the community, and wanting to make sure all the ducks were in a row, but it's very time-consuming. We also, I have to deal with the state, which is the Cannabis Control Commission, they periodically check in to make sure entities that are seeking permits are fully compliant with all the local rules and regulations, and because this is all so new, things aren't really synced up properly. They're asking me to sign off that everything's done, when they haven't been able to get everything done yet, because there's still more steps in our process to go. So, we're working through that, and we're still getting, every week, I'm getting inquiries from additional companies that are looking to come here, recreational, medical, even one more, most recently, that was strictly just deliveries, and those also take time. And the general process that I'm, that I'm doing, which I think follows your past practices, to explain the landscape, explain the fact, you know, that there's no limit in town, that the town hasn't adopted any limit, you've already entered into six host-community agreements, you don't think it's probably likely six will all be constructed, maybe a few of them will, but I'm letting them know there are six in the queue, and some already have special permits, and some have already begun construction, just so they know that there is competition, and I don't know what the saturation level is. If they're still interested, then I invite them to come in and meet with me and the attorney, and we talk about a host-community agreement, because if we can't work through that, there's no point in pursuing, you know, a special permit, et cetera. So that's occupying quite a bit of time, we're working on that. We had interviews yesterday, the team that I mentioned at previous meetings, we interviewed four firms, architectural firms for the McKinley School, request for qualifications, I've spoken about that a few times already. I did make available to all of you the, all the proposals here, I didn't know if any of you had any kind of comments or questions, but we did, we did the interviews, went on all day, we interviewed each firm for over an hour, had a great back-and-forth, we're lucky in that we really can't make a bad decision, they're all good, we're just trying to find the one that's best. We've also checked a lot of references, we think we know who the best firm is for us, and we're ready to move ahead. I just wanted to give you an opportunity, if you had any comments one way or the other, if not, we're comfortable moving ahead, and I'll let you know once we negotiate that final fee, obviously, which will be within the appropriation that we, the town meeting voted. Just three, three quick ones left. I did attend an open-space committee meeting with Larry last night, he might want to speak about it later, so I won't, I won't steal his thunder too much now, but, but it was a, it was an energetic meeting, there was a lot of comments. One thing I should just highlight that they did have concerns about was the fact that there was a deal with the prior developer up at Union Point, L-Star, to put some land, kind of restrict some land as open space at the end of Union Point, there was an MOU executed by all parties. Since L-Star has defaulted, and, you know, they're, they're done, it doesn't look like that agreement is enforceable any longer, and so there was a lot of concern about that and the relationship to changes that were made in zoning at Union Point, so we're, we're gonna look into that, but I'm just letting you know that that was a, that was a concern that they, a concern that they raised. Two quick ones left, we did receive a letter from Mass Housing from the state asking for comment about a potentially proposed 40B affordable housing project at Zero Pond Street, so I just want to let you know that Jen is taking the lead on that one, and she's working with all the relevant department heads to get comment, they're doing a site visit, they're gonna look into the project, and we'll draft a response. So you may have seen the letter, I just want to let you know that Jen is on top of that one. And then lastly, as I may have mentioned before, I'm gonna be out of the office this Thursday and Friday at the annual fall conference for the Mass Managers Association, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dirk.
Thanks, Doc.
Next on the agenda, Selectmen's comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen?
Well, thank you all of you for having me.
Thanks for showing up.
No problem, it's a pleasure for the last five minutes or so.
Just shows up to talk.
Yeah, I know. Oh, I watched, I was on, I was on the way back home from, oh, like another meeting, you know, it was actually, I had the video streaming, so I'm all caught up, and I wasn't watching, I was listening from the record, but, so happy to be here. I just wanted to officially welcome, I wish I could have done it earlier in the meeting, all the Cub Scouts here, we had the chance to meet about three weeks ago now, and had a great conversation about the school project, we talked, oh, like about the group Reimagine Rockland, and a whole host of things, and it was, I don't, I don't wanna go back in the history of my life, but I'm actually thinking about it, I said, like actually at the meeting, oh, really, a lot of the community-oriented stuff that, oh, you know, was scouting, taught me, it really instilled in me the importance of the, of our town and working for the town and volunteering for the town, so, thank you, guys, oh, for being here, oh, like I hope, oh, like I hope, oh, Mr. Olafen, I kept you entertained and wasn't that boring for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Ms. Nyman?
Don't, don't think I have much tonight, just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week. Crazy, it's already upon us.
Mr. Ryan?
Congratulations to the Rockland football team for their great season, they lost a tough game and still accomplished quite a bit. The volleyball team, the women's volleyball team, not the girls' volleyball team, these young women played like pros, like adults, they had a great game, they came up two points short in a five-game series, and there was some excellent volleyball played on both sides, and the other team that they played against was a winner, has won the thing nine times out of how many? So, we were up against the best team, and the first, in the first game, we, we sort of dominated them, and I thought, wow, this is gonna be, might be easy, and then they came back in the second game, when they showed that they have a lot of talent, and it's very well-organized, it's very well-run, everybody had a great time, they even dragged out a couple of the old principals, McKinley and, and Mr. Phelps, to go to the thing, and it was very, very good, and they should be congratulated. Thanks to the Cub Scouts for coming tonight. I often go to all the Eagle Scout ceremonies all the time, and that's a big goal for you guys to set your sights on. Every college in the world, and military schools or government schools love to have the name Eagle Scout checked off on your application when you go to college. So it's a, it's not a simple thing to do, but it's a way to prepare yourselves for your future. You know, it's never too, it's never too early to think about the future, and I'm gonna let him go at that. Thanks for coming, guys.
Okay. I also want to reiterate what Mr. Ryan said to Cub Scouts, PAC-12, appreciate you guys coming out. Todd and Jay, great job, these guys didn't make a peep the entire time, I know we've kept them very entertained, it's been some riveting stuff tonight, and I'm sure they're all ready to go to bed right away when they get home. It's gotta be exhausting for them, but thank you, guys, very, very well-behaved, we appreciate it. I just want to talk about a special town meeting on December 2nd. You know, there's been obviously a lot of conversation back and forth about this project all along, and whether you're for or against the project, the new school, I just, I just ask that people come out, come out and participate, town meeting, it's your chance to be heard and to hear the information from another place besides social media or just here at the meeting tonight. There's a lot of mistruths being spoken out there, I think, on social media, to Dan Biggins' point, there's some places that you can go for some information, you can go to the School Buildings Committee website, as well as the PAC's website as well, you can go to the town of Rockland website, and you can look up your town, your housing property and the assessment value, the assessed value of your property, and it'll give you exact calculation of what the amount you'd be paying in increased taxes for the school-building project. So again, it's, whether you vote for it or you don't vote for it, town meeting is really, really a way to get your voice heard. So if you don't show up to town meeting, then, you know, I'll honestly, you know, I just, participation, I think, is the most important thing, and then the following weekend, equally important, December 7th, if it makes it to December 7th. So, with that, enter into executive session, enter a motion to adjourn and go into executive.
Motion. Sorry.
I'll let you do something.
Go ahead, Mike, you can get on the minutes.
I have to go into executive session, I don't have my notes.
Not to reconvene?
Not to reconvene specifically for purpose number two, to conduct, actually, for the review and approval of executive session minutes of November 5th, 2019, for the periodic review and potential release of various previously-approved executive session minutes, under purpose number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations[1772.15]